I'd like to call this meeting to order. And we have a change in the agenda. We are going to add an award that our police chief, Darren Moody, is going to give to somebody. And we will put him first on the list there. So Darren, it's your time.
All right. Thank you, Commissioners, Mayor. We wanted to recognize somebody special today. Errol, why don't you stand up? Come on, you've got to stand up. It's the only chance I get to embarrass you, Errol. Errol Dayton? If any of you have been around a parade, football games, et cetera, in the last 28 years, you've seen Errol. He is the focus of our reserve program. He's been at probably most of the football games that have ever been played up there in the last 28 years. He's been a reserve police officer for 28 years. Every parade, every football game, special event, he's been the one that holds it together and gets everything going. Errol has decided to hang up his reserve hat after 28 years. He helped us with the Reserve Academy we just did. He's been a reserve longer than some of those have been alive. And he still keeps up with them. He consistently makes himself available for call-outs at major crime scenes, transports, and other details. He's worked at Shelton High School football games and dances and other community events for many years. His willingness to handle or assist in any case has been greatly appreciated. Even last Saturday with the Forest Festival, or two weeks ago with the Forest Festival, not only did he help all day long with the Forest Festival, but when I got back that night to go to the fireworks show, he was writing an accident report sitting in there. I said, "Is it time to go home yet?" "No, I had to do this, one more thing." And that's what Errol does for us. So it's with great appreciation that we present him with the plaque that says, "In appreciation for 28 years of dedicated service as a reserve officer from the Shelton Police Department." Congratulations. You get a free microphone with the Commissioners. You might as well take it, right?
Not a whole lot to say. Like I said, it's the family out here in blue. It's been my life. Been here 28 years, but I've got about, almost 40 years in law enforcement of some degree. So it's just been great with these last 20 years with these guys. It's just, you don't stick around a program like this without support and camaraderie and support of my wife. So, trying to break up here. But anyway, these guys that are awesome. I'm going to miss them like crazy, so. Excuse me, I'll be around though, so.
You're welcome anytime. Just have a couple of coffee.
Do a little ride along. So appreciate the city's support also, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner McDowell wanted to tell you something.
Errol, don't leave. Don't leave.
Captain, I go way back.
We do. We started here when the Civic Center opened to the public. I worked in the little cubicle up there, and Errol came on six months after I did, something like that. So we both go back, and this is not unusual for him to cry when he speaks because his heart is huge. He's a wonderful person to work for. He comes and sits with me in my yard and has a bonfire, and we hash over old times and stuff, and brings his wife, and we have a great time. So I just want to tell you that I know where you live, so I'm not going to miss you because I'll come out and see you. But I will miss, I will miss you. Yeah. Thank you for being a good friend and a great reserve police officer. Appreciate it.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
He isn't taking the police out of him yet, is he?
All right. Next on our agenda is, we're going to have Heidi McCutcheon from the Chamber come up and give a first-quarter report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Krantz, Commissioner McDowell, and Commissioner Moore, on behalf of the Board of the Shelton-Mason County Chamber of Commerce, I'm happy to present this report on our 2016 first-quarter tourism efforts on behalf of the City of Shelton. Ongoing efforts include visitor information services, maintenance of the online calendar, and then information services provided both in-person and by phone. You can read through kind of what the website has been. The most visited page on our website is the online advent calendar, which is good to see. In February, we began posting Mason County employment opportunities that the Chamber members have as well, and that has quickly become our most visited page. So that's exciting to see. We also created a Mason County Jobseekers Facebook page. To date, there are around 700 people that have joined that. That again was just implemented in February, so we've seen really good activity there from both employers posting their job openings, as well as people just saying, you know, "Do you need any housework or babysitting?" Landscaping services have been really popular as of late as well. So it's exciting to see an online presence where people can kind of go and tell what they have to offer and what's needed, so. I also have presented the visitor counts in comparison to the 2015 numbers. One of the things that we have been concerned about is that Billy Howard from the Historical Society has also been the person who has recruited and scheduled the volunteers and the caboose. With some health issues, et cetera, that she's had lately, that we've seen our volunteer numbers dwindle, and it seems more often than not that the caboose was closed than it was open. So just recently, we implemented a video surveillance system that actually has door contacts on the caboose that ding-dong in the Chamber office when somebody opens the door. There's a video camera placed there. On Page 2, you can see, I brought some extra photos too, in case anybody here isn't too good. But we can look up on either my cellphone or one of the tablets in the office to see who's walking in. We can actually hear what they're saying, so if there's not a volunteer there, and they say, "You know, I really wish that blah blah blah," then we can scoot over there really quickly and help them. We were hesitant to keep the doors closed when there wasn't a volunteer there. This seems to be a happy alternative to that. Obviously, there's nothing that can replace the one-on-one volunteers that are there with their experience, as well as enthusiasm for our community. But it is another way that we can allow visitors to at least experience the caboose, since it is a draw in and of itself. So that's one thing that we are very excited about. Outside of that, it is pretty much business as normal. Our visitor counts have been up this year. In our Hootsport office, we had our best May ever. And to date, the visitor counts that we've seen through the Chamber office, the caboose, and our Hootsport Visitor Center are nearly 20 percent more than they were last year at this time. So good things for Mason County.
All right. Are there any questions for Heidi while she's here?
I just think how frightening. So do you warn people that you can hear their voices, or do you surprise them?
Well, we don't, we haven't used the intercom to talk back to people because that would obviously be a little...
Creepy.
Yes, creepy. We try and stay away from creepy, so.
Yeah, I can imagine.
So when somebody comes in and we can overhear them saying, "Gosh, I really wish that I could find a City of Shelton map," or whatever, then one of us will run across and say, "Oh, we just saw you in here and thought you might need some help," so.
Do you have a microphone to answer questions?
I just, yeah, that was the only thing that I found a little amusing, was imagining the possibilities.
Well, and furthermore, if somebody is in there and are having some kind of on-toward conversation and sound like they may be causing some kind of vandalism or something else, then we can hear that as well. So it is an alternative to keeping the doors closed. Obviously, like I said, the volunteers that we have there are top-notch, so it isn't the full visitor experience we would like to be able to give, but with the technology available today, it is a good second, so.
So you are looking for more volunteers?
We are looking for more volunteers. They're, were listed in the Journal's Volunteer, we're also on the United Way Volunteer Match and a couple of other places, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
Here are none. Thank you for the report.
Good job.
Good job. All right. Next, we'll roll right into our weekly Commission reports. And Commissioner Moore, would you like to go first?
Certainly. Tuesday, I have a regular Housing Coalition meeting. On Thursday, I have a Downtown Visioning Committee, as well as a, an allocation meeting for housing dollars. It's, we've received, of course, more requests via grants than we have money for, but it will be going over the applications and trying to decide a fair and equitable way to divide up the money to do the most good in Mason County. And that is a service that we do through Public Health and the Housing Coalition, and we'll have federal, state, and county dollars to divide up. So I'm looking forward to that. On Friday, I have an all-day PRTPO meeting, and that's it for this week.
Thank you very much.
What do those letters stand for?
Peninsula Regional Transportation Planning Organization.
Okay, good. Just want to let people know what they're standing for.
So it's, yeah, it's a state office.
Okay. My turn?
Yeah.
Pretty quiet week. Wednesday, Peninsula Credit Union is having the Chambers After Hours at their place of business at 5:30, so I will be there. And Thursday, Weekly Briefing with Pete and my CareNet Board Meeting at 3:30. And that's it for me so far this week.
All right. And Tuesday, I will be attending my regular MaceCom Board Meeting. Wednesday will be Criminal Justice Board Meeting, along with planning to attend the Peninsula Community Federal Credit Union After Hours. Thursday is the possibility of going to an event out on the Hood Canal there, and I don't know exactly what they call it, but I've been invited to a few of these things, so I may be attending that on Thursday. And Friday, I will be endeavoring to make it back from Seattle in time to have lunch at the hospital with the Chamber, so at 11:30. That completes our weekly Commission reports. And so their next opportunity is a general public comment. If anyone would like to say something, this is one of the opportunities. All you have to do is sign in on the white piece of paper, which usually is on the end of that counter right there. So we have another opportunity a little bit later, so we'll move forward into a consent agenda, which there is none. And there is no old business at this time, but there is some items under new business. And so I will turn this over to Steve Goines at this point to talk to him about our 2016 Comprehensive Plan update.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This item is a land use-related ordinance. I'm incorporating this into our comprehensive plan update. We are talking mainly about policies in the comprehensive plan, but we also talk about the regulations that may need to be augmented to reflect those policy changes. In this case, I couldn't find a policy that necessarily was, needed to be modified to support this ordinance change, but it was significant enough where I thought we should have some public discussion, have some review and some dialogue. So this is a draft ordinance. Will be a comment on this for the coming months. We'll bring this back at a future time for consideration. In summary, this proposal is to expand the ability for business owners in the downtown district to have residential within their buildings. We were looking for a way to incorporate residential on the ground floor, which is a departure from our current regulations. Our policies support having residences downtown, but they also support having retail on the ground floor, and I think that stands to reason. What this proposal accomplishes, we would facilitate development of residential units in the rear portion of some buildings, and it would be up to the building owner whether they wanted to do this or not. Our limitation was the rear third of the building, reserving the front third, if you will, or the front two-thirds for retail uses. And sort of the win-win we saw in this concept was it's up to the building owner whether they want to do this or not. If they choose to have a unit on the ground floor, they are agreeing to have retail in the rest of the floor. So it's kind of an all-or-nothing proposition. We think that's a win-win for the surrounding buildings as well. They're getting an additional customer living next door, and they're getting a suite where they're probably going to get walked by pedestrians shopping kind of arrangement. So everybody wins in concept. We've had a couple of building owners request something like this to accommodate this, so this is, I think, was a good approach that, like I said, sort of creates a win-win for everybody. Open the feedback here, and as I said, this will be subject to public comment for the next several months. We'll bring this back for a final decision later in the fall.
Good. I'm glad to see that we're working on that. I know I had been approached by a business owner down on Railroad who was wishing he could have an apartment in the rear, so, perfect.
Isn't there a living space up above, like the bookstore? You know, there's Lynch Creek, there's Nita's, there's whatever. Is there not a living space somewhere in that block above?
There are living spaces on a number of blocks in the downtown district, and that is allowed outright right now. What we currently don't have is living spaces on the ground floor. And this is that departure. This is the change.
All right.
I think this is a good idea. I'll tell you why. Mainly because as someone that owns a few units, the ground level seems to be your highest demand, especially for walkers or wheelchairs or anything like that. And it also helps fill up some buildings downtown, and I do think it would not be proper on Railroad to have little apartments right off the main. So the entrance would have to be on the side of the street or in the alley?
Right.
Would that be side or alley?
It could be, it could be the front if you created a corridor or something. It depends on the configuration of the building. Probably most of them would be the alley.
Yeah. I guess, then I'm coming back to seeing some older buildings that did have apartments above, and the door was on the front street to go up to there.
Right.
And so, kind of like the next Lynch Creek floor, that building has a little staircase that takes you up to offices, but that may have been living space in the past.
I think the Angle Building has the stairs like that too, as well, to get you to the second.
Well, I think we sound like we're...
I love that idea. That is great. They just built brand-new apartments downtown Olympia, and I think what better place to have living is right in the center of the city.
Yeah. Our policies do encourage having residences living downtown. It makes downtown more vibrant, so in that regard, we're consistent with what we've been saying all along.
Very good. I like it.
Now, I did, I have been spending time going through this one and, you know, marking up. I did find one misspelled word. I don't even have to bring it up because you guys will catch that.
You can, you can talk to me later about that if you like, yeah.
Okay. And then, is this time at this moment to say anything else about this, or are we still thinking about this?
You can say it now or later. The time is open.
I had one question. I had, in this here, and I'll tell you the page and the actual location of this. It's talking about the water, Water Out John's Prairie is what it's talking about. And in this page, if someone else had this, it's page 14, and this is under the UGA Public Services Annexation. And the paragraph towards the bottom is talking about regional water and sewer plans, and when it's talking about the John's Prairie, it says, "But has," okay, "The Port of Shelton is no longer involved as a regional partner, but has become a wholesale customer. As the city provides water to the John's Prairie Industrial Park and will someday become a retail customer as well." Okay? So we're talking about an industrial park on John's Prairie, but when the city ran that water line out John's Prairie, was there not a timeline that existing people were supposed to hook up to that? Was that not part of, when they ran that? Aren't the existing businesses at some point supposed to hook up to that?
I, maybe the city engineer would be better suited to answer that question. I don't believe we set up a sunsetting for the customers. It was more of an opportunity for new development to connect to city water.
Yeah, that's correct. Because the majority of that's actually in the county, we don't have the teeth that force the connections. We do allow it under a utility extension agreement and payment of the latecomers fee that PUD has implemented as part of the project. Remember, they were the ones that actually built the water line on the behalf of the city at their expense as part of their development out there.
See, the question is, there is no required date or time that someone on that water line has to hook up to it?
That is correct.
Okay? Answers my question. Okay, we'll talk more about that.
One more question. Excuse me. Page one, it says, "Gas stations retail sale of gasoline and related convenience items only." Could you explain what means "no service available"?
This is on the, that page.
Yeah. You see it?
That's for allowed uses in the downtown. I believe what that is referring to is, back in the day, gas stations were also repair garages. Oftentimes, you could have an array of those kind of repair services done, and that's sort of changed over time. I think this reflects more of what we consider the modern gas station, where you go and get fuel. You can have a convenience store there, but you're not doing auto repair.
Okay, so the "no service available" means there's no model.
Auto-related services.
Okay, I see. All right. That's the only question I had.
Any other questions or comments? Okay? Yes?
Just a question, Commissioner. Would you prefer to have that "no service available" expanded as a part of this draft ordinance to clearly indicate what it means?
I would, because I'm reading "retail sale of gasoline and related convenience items," and then it says "no service available." Are they talking about, like, it's there, but they're not going to service, you know? You know, it's confusing.
So is that a, is that a minor clarifying amendment? The rest, the Commission has a concurrence to at least consider?
Oh, I think, yeah, it probably would be good to clarify.
More extensive. Yeah.
Commissioner Moore? You okay with adding that for clarification?
Oh, absolutely, yes.
Okay.
Yes. Thank you.
We got it. We'll take care of two issues and one ordinance.
Okay. Sounds good.
Okay, so let's see. At this point, we've given you some comments, and there's nothing else you need from us at this time.
No decision at this point.
Thank you, sir. All right. And we have something under an administration report. We'll turn this over to Pete Buttigieg, our... Did I miss something?
Not yet.
Sorry. I jumped ahead.
Yeah, sometimes I do that all the time.
Take them down and pass them around.
Did we skip the Pear Orchard?
Commissioner, I'm not going to read this, but I'd just say, there's been a question come up about what level of debt does the city have and what level doesn't it have? So for your convenience and that of the public, I put this memo together. I think it's self-explanatory. I'm not going to go through it. It doesn't need to be gone through, but it's there for your and the general public information. If you have questions, I'll be glad to respond to them now or any other time, but I'd encourage you to look at it first and then come back with the questions. That's it.
All right. Thank you very much.
On the debt memo. Just a reminder, the next week, we intend to have a contract before you on labor negotiation professional services, and one for approval with the Procter &amp; Company for the finance director, Rick, to assist with the selection process.
Okay.
That's it for me.
Thank you.
All right. Well, next on the agenda is a general public comment period.
Under admin reports, Steve's going to give a Pear Orchard project.
Yeah, well, let me see here. That was, okay, I see. We, I put Pete in his place, but that's all right.
You put Pete in his place?
Now I'm done.
Well, no, yeah, so, sorry on that. Yes, we're going to have an update from Steve about the Pear Orchard.
Thank you, Mayor. Wanted to give the Commission an update on this, at this, of the Pear Orchard entryway slash park-and-ride project on SR3. We've been talking about this project often, on for quite some time. There's been some activity of late, and wanted to give you sort of the current status. We were working with Simpson to secure a portion of the site which they needed to, well, we needed in order to make the site whole. If you're familiar with the site, let me get up and I'll kind of point to the exhibit I have here. This is SR3. Back up here is the Red Road Trellis, and this chunk that's out of the map, or the uncolored portion of the map, is the layout yard at Pearl Building. So it's that stretch of road along there. This is where the pear trees are. This is where approximately the old sewer station, or sewer facility was demolished. And our future improvements include a park-and-ride facility here and some trails, ultimately connecting the marina to the downtown. A portion of this site is what we refer to as Boot Hill. There is a pile of old street sweepings that we found through survey processes was actually part of the Simpson Holdings, and we've been trying to secure that to make the site whole so we can bring this project forward for the bidding process. Along the way, we were trying to work through the, securing the site in a manner that continues to make us eligible for federal funding, including the funding we have now. The folks at Simpson were looking for a way to structure this in a manner that also gave a nod to the environmental indemnity they wanted to receive as part of that acquisition. And we were, in the end, unable to find a way to call this a donation that meets the Uniform Act. As a result, we're going out to have the property appraised. That is a contract amendment we need to execute with our consultant team. We believe that is going to be in the neighborhood of $8,000. That's within the signing authority, I believe, of the Public Works Director. Wanted to mainly make you aware that we're moving forward on that change, and that that's an amendment to our current contract. The reason we're not bringing that for the Commission is twofold. It's within the signing authority of staff, but also to save us some time. We're really trying to push this project hard to get a lot to bid this fall, and so every week counts. So we're trying to shave off some of the time that this process takes. We are securing consultants to do an appraisal evaluation of the property. We're hoping that we can complete that by the end of this month and get that into the real estate folks at local programs at the Wash dot office for their review and consideration. We understand there's the possibility that they may ask for a second appraisal to verify that appraisal. This process could take some time, and that's one of the reasons we wanted to avoid it. But we have to wait and see. The review time with the Wash dot folks could take anywhere from two weeks to two months. So there's a, there's a lot of uncertainty in terms of how long that process will take. What we can do is certainly try to bring the best package we can forward and try to urge upon them to help us meet this deadline to get the project bid out this year, assuming that we can get through that process in a timely manner. At that point, we really have three remaining steps. We need to get our design package reviewed and approved through local programs' office before we can go to bid. That requires a memorandum that Mike will prepare that outlines our construction team and getting their authorization for the components of that team. And there's a public interest funding form that we need to complete. The public interest funding form is a form that the state utilizes so that the funding for these projects can be melded into a single project, and we think that's in the public interest to do that. It's really just a formality in terms of getting that through their process, but that is one of those boxes we need to check to be eligible for this federal funding. At that point, we should be ready to go out for ad. And what I think I can tell you at this point is, maybe in mid-August, we can come back and tell you how that valuation process is going, the timing of that. But as this project gets in the fall, it's unlikely that we would be in a place where we can award a contract and begin construction. It's wet season, and that's not a good place to be working when it's wet. But I wanted to make you aware of those changes in that update.
Doesn't sound like this has been the simplest of tasks, getting this thing together.
This project's been a monster, yes.
It would have been easier. Well, we started it, and so I think we need to see it through, and so...
Of course. Yes.
Yeah. Thank you for your report.
Thank you.
You bet.
All right, general public comment. Do you have somebody signing? Do you have somebody signed in?
I'm Mr. Forrest Cooper. Thank you very much, Commissioner. Mayor, I'm Forrest Cooper, 409 West Railroad and 807 South 14th Street. As you guys know, I own a building downtown, right in the middle of Railroad on the 400 Block. My building is 30 feet by 100 feet long. It's a standard parcel size for the mid-block down there. The blocks are usually broke up into 60-footers on the ends, and then 30-footers, and then those 30-footers are divided down into 15-foot tenant spaces. So, our building, for instance, actually has two addresses. We're 409 and 411. However, we have only one business in that building. And we've started to see that more and more as our town has changed over the years. And what I have also started to see is our retail spaces disappearing or being used as office spaces, or, for instance, we have just a couple blocks over, there's a building that has two retail spaces that's used as a church annex. And they do great things. I'm not going to knock what they do, but it's two retail spaces that are lost. We also have, and I do understand, we have some vacancies right now, and we'd like to get those filled. But there are some serious logistical issues with considering putting residential on the ground floor. Now, it's been proven that a vibrant downtown is more vibrant when people live within that space. And that was also evident during our recent visioning meetings, the visioning process that's been going on over the last year. The experts came in and said that it's, we want to get more residential downtown. However, they said you want to limit it to the upper stories of your buildings. Because there's more than just saying, "We can get more people down there," what you start to do is create everything from limiting your retail spaces to also creating traffic problems from delivery trucks that no longer could enter through the rear of the buildings. I've also seen firsthand with the struggles that a business right next door to us has. The Strip Steakhouse Restaurant right next to us, we've all eaten there, and it is amazing. It's dangerous being right next to them. But what you need to look at in their situation, they don't have a rear entrance, and they totally wish they did. But what we have seen as a result is, all of their product, all their produce, and all of their food has to come in the front door. And it's, they've tried to figure out all different ways to try and create a new rear entrance, something to where they can get their food in and out and get things in and out. But in the end, it's just not working out at this time for them. But I've seen the struggles firsthand. So if we start to chunk off the back of some of our existing buildings that are still intact, that's still open to the alleys, we're going to start to see some real problems downtown, mainly with the logistics of trying to operate a business and the amount of space within those areas for a business to want to come in and do business. So if we take a 15-foot wide parcel or retail space and we turn it into a 15 by 60, or you're going to have a very small place to do business. So, I encourage you to really look at the pros and cons of this situation, and thank you so much for the time.
Thank you for your comments. All right.
I have a comment.
Okay.
What is in the back of the Strip House?
The Strip, those three parcels that go to the Listy, we got the Strip, and then you have the Catholic Bookstore. Those little buildings only go back like 60 feet. And then, you have on the back of that, there's the building that goes to the side that has the antique store on it, on 4th Street.
Okay, okay.
That building extends all the way to our wall. So, you see what I'm saying?
I do.
So, the angle building is technically only the front two-thirds.
Right, right.
And then the back third is a building positioned this way.
Yeah, right, okay.
So, you start to see, there's some weird breakups down there.
Okay.
The building next to us, too, has also been, there's one that's been sectioned off because the building next door expanded. And if you look at the plot map of that, it's weird because there's actually, the building comes over into that section, and they have this funky little use of space there.
Okay.
I encourage residential up top, for sure.
Thank you very much for your comments. All right. If no other comments, then we can move into administration final touches. From anybody? Okay. Our next meeting will be June 20th, 2016, at 6:00 PM. And before I close this meeting, I just want to let everyone know, we're recessing now into executive session to evaluate the qualifications of the candidate for public appointment to, at least, well, we're talking about the future city administrator.
Yes.
Okay. For that appointment, and this will be last 30 minutes with possible action to follow. So, at that time, I'm going to recess this meeting. Our next meeting will be Monday, June 20th, 2016, at 6:00 PM in the evening. Okay, is everybody ready? Okay. I'd like to reconvene our city commission meeting at this time. Well, we are, have negotiated and talked about something, and I think we have made a decision, and we are ready to make a motion concerning the position of city administrator after our interim city administrator position.
So, should I make the motion now? Am I ready to make a motion, Pete? Am I ready to make the motion?
You may.
Okay. I move that the City of Shelton make a formal offer for the position of city administrator to Ryan Wheaton. This offer is made based on the recruitment and selection process that was largely culminated on Thursday, July 9. The interim city administrator is authorized and directed to make such an offer and, if accepted, negotiate on behalf of the commission and employment contract to include periodic evaluations with performance standards.
I second that motion.
There's a motion and a second concerning the hiring of a city administrator to Ryan Wheaton. And all those, any other further questions? All those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, unanimous. There you go. So, I don't think there's anything more we do at this time, but officially close our meeting again.
That is correct.
All right. So, this City of Shelton commission meeting is closed finally. Thank you for attending.